Now called this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. We'll welcome all those who have, are in attendance tonight and also everyone that's watching the meeting on G-10. I would begin tonight by having everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Angela Washington and followed by the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day, for the blessings and benefits you bestow upon us individually and upon us collectively as citizens of the city of Jacksonville. We especially give thanks that we live in a military town, a military city, where we get to work, to live by, to visit true heroes, our veterans and our active duty military. We give thanks for our veterans and their service and continued service to our community and to our nation, and we ask your protection and blessings to always be with our active duty military to keep them safe and secure and to be with their anxious families. And as always, we ask you to bless our mayor, to bless our council, to give them guidance and direction and to be with them and their deliberations. All this we ask in your holy name.
Amen.
Counsel, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting with the addition of one consent item. It'll be 5A, opioid litigation, and also removal of item nine, or excuse me, deferral of item nine until the December 4th, I believe it's the fourth meeting?
Seventh, I believe.
Seventh?
It's the meeting in December.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to add something, talk about sports unaccomplished committee to the agenda.
That's number seven.
We can add that in.
It's already on here.
It's number seven, that's what that.
Right, just want to make sure we get that.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's already on there. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This will be our first session of public comment for this evening.
Mayor?
Dr. Woodruff, if you would, read the rules for public comment.
In 2003, the city council adopted the following rules of procedure for public comment. In brief form, it states the following: Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. No time will be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Persons wishing to address the council must sign up at the sign up sheet prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be acknowledged to speak in the order in which their names appear on the sign up sheet. Public comment is not intended to require the council to answer any questions. Speakers may only discuss matters that are within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Thank you.
First person I have is Mr. Kent Hagan. I will give your address even though we know who you are and name to the court.
My name is Kent Hagan. The address is 901 Gum Branch Road. Councilman Sosa, thank you. Councilman Jackson, thank you. Councilman Bittner, thank you. Councilwoman Washington, thank you. Councilman Thomas, thank you. Councilman Warden, thank you. Mayor Phillips, thank you. Now, why am I thanking you? I'm thanking you for the courageous and great act that you did just recently in purchasing this land for recreation purposes. As a former recreation director for this city, I'm envious. I wished it had happened during my tenure, but it happened. You're to be congratulated for your courage in doing it and more importantly, for your foresight in recognizing the importance of recreation to our community. And this land will help project Jacksonville forward for the next 50 to 100 years. There's no question about it. When we developed the Jacksonville Commons, I thought at that time that was the best thing, recreation wise, that had ever happened to Jacksonville, and I was wrong. And you ladies and gentlemen saw an opportunity and you took advantage of that opportunity. You will get some criticism, and the reason that I'm here tonight is to tell you that at least one citizen in Jacksonville praises you for what you did, compliments you for what you did, and I'm so proud that you took this tremendous step. And I hope that one day that my great grandchild will be able to play on the ball fields that I know will be developed in the future. Three minutes is not very long to talk about something this tremendous, but I can tell you that I am so proud of what you did and I'm so proud that you took the initiative to make this happen, and I just want you to know that. Thank you for your time and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Next person on the agenda is Carmella George from 703 Ashcroft Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Carmella George of 203 Ashcroft Drive, Jacksonville. I'm a city resident and local businesswoman. I stand before you tonight to address the position presented to you some weeks ago to create a housing authority in the city of Jacksonville. We, the citizens of Jacksonville and the surrounding area, have presented a significant opportunity to you. This is an opportunity to bring significant federal funding into this community, an opportunity to make a difference in one of the most needed areas of this community, an opportunity to care for what would be considered the least of these that the Bible speaks of. Provided increased access to decent housing should not be a trivial subject. Decent housing should be a basic human right. We're asking you to consider a housing authority in the context of 2021, where most cities are now building mixed income communities. By the 2020 census, Jacksonville is the 14th largest city in North Carolina. Do you know how many of the top 15 cities have housing authorities or very similar public housing departments? Every single one except Jacksonville. Some would suggest that the county and city already have a public housing authority. My question is, what have they built? Since bringing this petition to council, I've heard the comment that housing authorities are a thing of the past and that governments are moving away from them. If that's true, can you name a few that have closed or dissolved? My research shows that couldn't be further from the truth. The manager was quoted in the daily newspaper saying the city hopes that private developers will do the right thing on the soon to be demolished town center property. Our response is what, what is, when has hope ever been an executable strategy in and of itself? North Carolina received almost $10 million in CARES Act funding for public housing agencies. None of that was received by the city of Jacksonville. I believe the question now turns to how this will be initially paid for. I ask you to direct your staff to come back with possibilities before the public hearing. Mr. Woodruff was quoted at your October 5, 2021, meeting, saying that the current regional housing authority has done a very poor job in the city of Jacksonville. Thusly, this position deserves serious consideration. We have a housing crisis and affordable housing shortage. Now is the time to act. We urge you to create a community plan, undertake a housing study, or make an affordable housing plan. While you're at it, we ask that you remember minority developers and your contracting. It seems opportunities within the city thus far have only been available to a select few and absolutely unequal. In short, our request is simple: Do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Mr. Carter, you received the copy of the.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to go ahead and address it. This was going to be my report, but this is an opportune time to do it. We certainly have received Ms. George's petition along with the others, which is over the 25 number that the statute talks about. I have been in touch with Tyler Mulligan of the School of Government, and we've had correspondence back and forth. We, as a history as you may know, and I'll give you that in more detail at a later date, but Jacksonville did have a housing authority, which it gave up, and gave it up to the regional housing authority, East Carolina Regional Housing Authority, and they built the units that are over on Plaza Drive, close to Plaza Manor, it's called JDL Drive. Mr. Bittner shaking his head may have been the manager at that time, I can't recall. But I believe that it's possible, if the council wants to create a housing authority, they can, they can act as one. Again, Tracy Jackson's doing research to give you information. I'm doing legal research to make sure you know what the law is and what your obligations may or may not be. With the holiday coming up, you know, this is your last meeting except on December the 7th. At that meeting, I believe at 6 o'clock, you scheduled the tree lighting ceremony, so that very well may be a shortened meeting. What staff is recommending, because the statute does require a public hearing, is that, and we have to give the 10 days notice and, you know, comply with the law, that on whatever the second meeting in January 2022 is, which is not that far away, that we give that public notice and that you hear not only from the staff, but you hear from any citizens, Ms. George, and anyone else that wants to come and speak to this issue, and then y'all can give us further direction at that time. But we'll be prepared by then to, again, give y'all information and for y'all to be ready to receive it, as well as the information from the petitioners and anyone else in the public who'd like to come speak.
Thank you. So, counsel, now we have adoption of the minutes and consent items. These are minutes from the November 3, 2021, regular meeting.
Move the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
Including the add-on. Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Brings us to item number six on your agenda for this evening, and this is the auditor's report on the city's financial, annual comprehensive financial report. And this will be Ms. April Adams from Cherry Beckett, LLP.
You got it. Difficult to pronounce, but Beckett, yes. All right, so, good evening, yes, thank you for having me. I'm here to present the audit results from the June 30, 2021, audit. What I'd like to cover with you tonight is to briefly cover and remind you what the role of the external auditor is. Then I'll talk a little bit about internal controls and what procedures we do related to those. I'll identify what we deem to be the significant audit areas, and then I'll go over the audit results themselves, and then I've got a couple of financial highlights from the financial statements themselves. Then I'll do a quick summary of what you should take away from the presentation, and then I'll be glad to take any questions or comments. Okay, so the role of the external auditor. We perform your audit in accordance with two sets of auditing standards. The first set is just the generally accepted auditing standards of the United States, and then any entity that would get an audit would get it performed under those standards, and then we add the government auditing standards as your government entity, as well as you administer a lot of federal and state grant dollars. Both of those standards require us to plan and perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. And basically what that means is that we do a risk-based audit, and so that's why it's important for me to tell you what those significant audit areas are. Once we've performed all of those procedures, we are required to express an opinion on whether those financial statements are free from material misstatement. Because we audit your audit, or audit your entity, the city, in accordance to two sets of auditing standards, we issue a separate opinion for each one of those auditing standards, and then we issue two other opinions related to the compliance of the federal and state dollars that we tested as well. The audit centers also require us to communicate certain things to you as a result of the audit or that may have occurred or come about during the audit, and we do that in two ways. One is the letter that accompanies your financial statements, as well as this presentation this afternoon. The types of things that we're required to communicate to you is if there were significant changes in accounting policies, we're required to identify what the significant estimates are within your financial statement, and then, and there's lots of other things in that letter, but I'm just pointing out some highlights. And then the last thing would be that we identify any journal entries that were identified as a result of our audit. Okay, so internal controls. We are not required to opine on internal controls, but we are required to do quite a bit of work with internal controls and then report to you whether we found any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses within those internal controls. So what we do is we identify what we deem to be the significant transaction cycles. Those are things like cash dispersments, cash receipts, payroll, how does the financial information get into the financial system and then out into the audited financial statements themselves? And what we do is we get all of the policies and procedures related to those significant transaction cycles, and then we walk through a test of one. So we take one transaction from its initiation and walk it through how it gets reported in the system, approved, and then ultimately how it gets reported in your financial statements. We also can decide if we want to test for effectiveness of those controls and actually pull a full sample and test to make sure that those controls are indeed working, and then we can rely upon that as a part of our audit procedures. We do test for effectiveness for the city's audit over cash dispersments and payroll, as well as the financial close. The audit centers also require us to do certain things for journal entries, and so what that means is that we get a data dump of all journal entries made throughout the year, and we put it through a system, mining it, looking for unusual transactions, significant transactions, and then we pull a sample of those and look for the supporting documentation, look at the accounts that were used, and looking at the purpose of the journal entry to make sure that all of that makes sense, as well as being properly approved, going through the proper approval process. And then finally, the audit centers want us to take a look at your IT controls, and so we look at the general computer controls, looking at how is that financial system secure physically, as well as with passwords and those types of things. And so we go through a questionnaire to find out that information. Okay, so significant audit areas. As I mentioned, we do that risk-based audit, and so that means that we are looking specifically at where your financial statements are most susceptible to being materially misstated. And so I've listed what we deem those areas to be here in the big green circle, and basically what we're doing with those audit areas is that we're testing them substantively and we're looking, we're confirming with a third party if we can. We're looking at those amounts analytically and looking at the relationship of how they changed based on what we know occurred through the year. And then finally, if we have to, we will pull a test of details and all the supporting documentation related to that sample. I don't want you to think that we ignored all the other areas in your financial statements, but this is where we spent the bulk of our time. Also considered to be a significant audit area is the single audit, and so that is the audit over the federal and state dollars that the city receives and administers. And so we go through an identification process of determining which programs to test as major, and that means that we put them through a test of the 14 compliance requirements that are deemed to be material to that program. And so we tested your administration of your coronavirus relief funds, your federal transit cluster, as well as your POW bill funds, which is the street funds for the current year. All right, so the audit results. I'm happy to let you know that all four of the opinions are what we call unmodified opinions. I know that doesn't sound great, but that is also known as a clean opinion. That's the opinion that you want, and so that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you as a firm that your financial statements are free from those material misstatements that we were looking for, as well as your federal and state dollars are being administered in compliance with those required compliance requirements. For internal controls, as I mentioned, we don't opine on them, but we do report if we find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We did not find any of those in our review of those controls for single audit. We did not identify any findings or issues with the administration of those programs. And then the required communication, again, this is that letter that accompanies your financial statement. There were no significant changes in accounting policies throughout the year. GASB has given us a break, and there were no accounting policies to, or accounting standards to implement in the current year that were significant to you guys. For estimates, the significant estimates in your financial statements are things like the depreciable lives used for your capital assets, it's your allowance for doubtful accounts, it's your estimate of your pension for your employees, as well as their post-employment benefits, their healthcare insurance. And so those are the types of estimates that are in your financial statement. And then finally, there were no journal entries identified as a result of our audit procedures, and so what that means is that all those policies and procedures in place are properly capturing all the financial data of the city throughout the year. So that's a clean report all across the board. All right, so now we're going to move into a couple of just financial results from the financial statements themselves. This first slide is just looking at the general fund. You, as a board, set a budget for that general fund for management to execute throughout the year, and so I'm just here reporting the results of that, the actual results compared to what you had budgeted in your final budget. Revenues beat the budget by $1 million. A large part of that, well, $2 million, it really beat $2 million in the sales tax category, but then it's offset with some investment income and, there was one other thing. Investment income, the recreation fee and recreation fees and the utility franchise tax offset that $2 million extra of sales tax. And then for expenditures, you came in under budget by $6.5 million. That one spread a little bit across the general government category function, public works and public safety. And then finally, when you set your budget, you had planned the use of fund balance by appropriating fund balance of $7.9 million in the final budget, but really the city just came in of needing only to use $145,000 in the current year. Also, looking at the general fund, the council has set a goal, a policy of having at the end of the year only a minimum, of having at least 10% of expenditures for the next year in their unassigned fund balance for the year, and so I'm just reporting to you that you had $15.4 million, which is $28.6, just meaning that you're adhering to your policy, a minimum of 10%. And then here's just a snapshot of the capital asset activity for the year. You have a total of, total capital assets of $184 million. You had some water and sewer improvements of $3.4 million. You added some sidewalk and street improvements of about $800,000, parks and rec improvements of $720,000, and then you added some buildings of $5.6 million in the current year. And then here's just a long, a snapshot of your long-term debt activity. So you've got $66 million worth of debt, 40, it's made up of 43 million of bonds, 21 million of installment notes, and 2 million of just loans. For the activity for the current year, you did issue $28.6 million worth of new debt, but it refunded debt that already existed of $24.2. And then, as well as you also made payments in the current year, principal payments of $38.8 million. Okay, so in summary, you received, all four opinions were clean opinions, there were no journal entries identified in the audit, there are good internal controls in place capturing all of the activity, financial activity of the city, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in that internal control review. And then just, this is my chance to give a big thank you to Gail and her team for giving us all the information we asked for during the audit. It is quite a bit, and she provided all of that electronically for us this year to carry out the audit, so just thank you. And now I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, counsel, any questions to Ms. Adams regarding the audit?
What percent of sampling do you do on transactions?
Trying to figure out how to, it just depends on what area and whether we needed to do the sample or not, so it's that combination. When I mentioned the substantive audit areas, if we can, let's just say the balance is debt, if we can confirm that debt, then we're not going to do any sampling. Does that make sense?
Okay. Internal controls, is there still in existence a required vacation usage policy?
Can you repeat that, please? Is there a?
Required. As far as internal controls, is there a required usage of vacation by employees?
Required usage of vacation by employees?
Let me address, let me answer that for you. The answer is yes. There is a maximum number of hours that an employee can accrue. After that, that accrual goes to their sick time. Now, if you'll recall, vacation is paid when an employee leaves. Sick time is not. The only way that an employee benefits from sick time is to actually be sick or at the time they retire. The maximum number of hours that can be accrued is 240 hours, basically six weeks.
I have a question, I think I know the answer, but you can, can you back up just one, two, three, four, five, six? Okay. The added buildings at 5.6, I'm guessing that's where we budgeted for Jackham yet? I mean, because I, okay.
I think that's Jacksonville Station.
Jacksonville Station as well? Oh, okay, okay, that's right. Okay.
But let's also discuss Jackham yet. You agreed to build Jackham yet and return to the general fund. You were going to loan the money to the general fund and pay it back over a four or five-year period out of your four cent initiative. Gail, would you mind coming up a moment, please? Let's discuss the payment so far, or where we stand financially on Jackham yet.
We've moved the money over, but we have not spent any of the city's money yet, I don't believe. There may have been one payment to the contractor, and then we'll budget, starting with the upcoming budget, to repay the funds.
Okay. Thank you.
What else?
Can you back up to the percentage as required by the state?
Yes.
This isn't requirement of the state, it's the city set the policy.
Okay. Meant by the city. I'd also remind the council that when the public looks at this, they may say, why do we have so much money in an uncommitted reserve? Hurricane Florence cost the city over $9 million to clean up. It took us several years to get it back, and one of your budget notes, which is on page 27 and 28, says the following: The city experienced a major hurricane in September of 2018. That was Florence. The expenditure for response and repair are being recorded in a major fund for emergency relief. The fund balance in this fund is 1.59 million, an increase of 0.58 million from reimbursements received in the current fiscal year. And what is that really saying? What it says is, as soon as you get a bill in, it's expected to be paid. And remember who pays it? The city. It takes you years to receive the final payment for any type of major disaster. So when you look at the number of $15.4 million, you could say, why aren't we doing A, B, C, D, E, F, G? The answer is, not a good idea. We were very fortunate this year and last year not to have a major hurricane. But if Hurricane Florence, which did have 60 mile an hour winds for over 30 hours and dropped 33 inches of rain, took down that many trees, I would remind you to look back at some of the hurricanes that I did not experience, but you experienced. Now, from a staff standpoint, we would tell you, be very, very frugal in spending that fund balance, because you don't know whether you're going to have one hurricane or none, or two or three. So, the other thing, while I'm speaking, every year I always ask the auditor this, and I'd like to ask April you this: At any time during your work, did any member of the city staff, including myself, ask you in any way to modify any opinion or to change any of the findings that you were going to report to the city council?
No, sir.
And do you understand that this audit, you were hired by the city council to report this audit to them, that you're not the employee of the city staff?
I do.
Thank you.
And I was just going to add one thing about the fund balance of being 28%. The LGC, who approves your debt, wants that number to be more around the 25% mark where you've got it, so, again, before you decide to go spend that, I would check that.
Motion second, any other discussion? Here, none all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Thank you very much.
I will tell you, while April and her staff do a lot of work, Gail and her staff, I'd like to ask you to join me in thanking Gail and her staff for the work on this audit. Thank you.
We go down into old business number seven on the agenda here, and this is Recreation Planning for the Future. We, at our last workshop, we, I gave you a presentation regarding the purchase of property that we've made in the area of Williamsburg Plantation. To you, it's about 400 plus or minus 400 acres of property. And if you go to the next slide there, as far as the purchase was for 2.4 million dollars, tax value on the land was 2.6, so we came under, a little bit, a little bit under the tax value on that property. As far as funding this is concerned, we're about to sell property in the commons, which, to the one place formerly the Children's Advocacy nonprofit for 1 million dollars. And there was also a 1.4 million dollar loan from the general fund that will be paid back through the four cents, four cent fund over the next five years. And we'll also repay through the sale of additional properties that we have available that are, we've determined that we're not, that are not essential for city operations. What we're going to do with this land is we're going to address the current needs of city recreation programs. Also look at what our future quality of life programs and facilities are going to, should be, or what we would like to see, and other future opportunities that may arise. Now, during that presentation, I ask y'all to go back and think over the next two weeks how you wanted to approach dealing with planning for this future that we're trying to design for ourselves. So with that, we have any discussion?
I do. I'd like to make a motion that we set up a committee that involves more than just the city council. We need to have people that are going to be involved from all aspects, because we're paying for this for future use, I mean, it's going to cost a lot of money. And we need more than just, I think, the city to be involved in it. I think we need the county to be involved, because we are also county taxpayers on top of being city taxpayers. People from the county will also be using this to make this work and to see where I think it can get at some point. We need more people involved than just, just us, my personal opinion. I'd like to see a committee set up of city council, of county members, transportation, sports committee, and some business people would be helpful also. I think everybody can benefit from this, and if we can all pull our resources together, we can really do this project done right. It's going to be a large project that will, I think, will be larger than the commons will be at some point when it's at completion. So I feel like I would like to see a committee that would be, with all these people, not just strictly city council. And I have an idea of that structure, if you want to hear it or not. The structure of how many people would be on that committee or not.
Just, just, just to make a comment, the, the two or three council people that we talked about was not intended to be a closed committee. This was, this was intended to set up to seek out strategic partners, to look at other folks who would be willing to bring funding, their ideas, their needs, what can they do to help the city. So it was intended to, to bring in all the groups that you just talked about. And that's, it is not a closed committee, it's not, by that, I'm saying it's not closed, just those three council members that, that you, that we've, you know, we're talking about. It is actually to get, to coordinate between what the city rec and the city staff, the city recreational advisory board wants, as well as potential partners like the county, the economic development, the sports commission, schools, et cetera. So it's not intended just to be a two, three man person committee. It's actually to reach out to these other groups and bring them in, and, and to really make this a community-wide discussion. Let's, let's, let's talk about, let's bring our partners from in the community to sit down and talk about a community vision for this land, not just ours, but a true community vision. Does that, I think that addresses your concern, you were, I think you're concerned.
Well, I mean, I still think we need to have a, where, you know, there is six or seven people at one time, sit down and be able to bounce these ideas off and not go from here to then present to another group, to present it to another group. I feel like that takes a lot more time than what needs to be done. I feel like if we had a group of six or seven people, where we can make some decisions a little bit quicker and make some better decisions, I feel like we could get somewhere a little bit better and faster.
Well, I think eventually that'd grow. I mean, you know, we're talking about, when we're talking about, you know, the possibility of putting a limited number of people, we're talking about more or less an advance party to fill it out, see, try to determine, you know, what, which way, which direction we're going to head in. I think, I think the more people involved at the initial level, I think it can make things a lot, very confusing, in my opinion. You know, it's, it's not that anybody's going to be left out in the, in the end, that's, that's not what, what's going to go on here. I mean, there are some things that, you know, that need to be done in advance before we can actually, you know, this is going to be a long-term thing. This is, this is going to be, this is something that's going to be built next year or a year after. This is, this is something that's going to take some time, and you know.
I, I kind of agree with kind of what everybody's saying. I think it needs to be a larger entity at some point in time, but right here, we're just at the incubation stage. I mean, we're just starting out. And so to make it, to open up Ali Ali Umfree and you get all these voices involved, then you can possibly delay the process instead of speed it up. You know, we have, as the council, have committed to taxpayers' dollars, that we've, we've spent the money here, so now we need to keep our best interest at heart. I mean, we have to move slowly on this, and I'm in agreement with the, with the proposed composition of this initial group to begin the evaluation process. I mean, everybody's got their own ideas, but it's going to take a lot of distillation over time to make it what it needs to be. And I'm reluctant at the initial to actually, you know, to give up the control that we have, or the responsibility that we have to respond to, responsibly for the money we have committed for our citizens. I mean, if we can find partners along the way that are willing to go in equally, and I mean, a partner that brings more than just their ideas. I mean, we need substantial funding for this long-term, and, you know, I'm somewhat hesitant about a lot of it, but I think if we move slowly, then we don't run such a risk of creating something that overwhelms us financially, which is always a possibility when you go into some of these large projects. But moving slowly, developing it along the way, doing what we can, as we can, you know, Ken got up there and thanked us for the courage. Well, the courage has been provided by the staff and the management, that they have run such an efficient operation over the years, that we knew no matter what, we were in such a good position, this wasn't going to cause us to raise taxes, we weren't going to have to do anything extra for this. We had the money available because of prudent way we've operated over the years. And I think it would be, you know, just as prudent to move slowly on this and, and get our group together to entertain other ideas, to formulate, to compile, and, and evaluate, and bring to us. We've all, all of us will have our say. And so I.
And in the long-term, I don't disagree with Mr. Sosa's statement.
Right, right. Other people can, should be involved. I mean, we need more than other people, but to start out with just, what are you going to pull on a hat? I mean, you have to, you know, a lot of evaluation has to be done.
You know, I don't know what things have happened, everything's happened in the past in terms of, you know, collaborating with other government entities as well as working with private, you know, entities. I understand what everybody's talking about also. We made initial investment. I get that, so we have a responsibility to fulfill the needs that we have. But I think what Logan is saying, which I've always wondered, is why don't we have a facility large enough to do what a whole lot of other cities that are small enough is doing? And I know the funding is not, we're not looking at just funding from us when we start doing the projects we want to do in the future. So I'm trying to figure out at what point do we get these other entities involved, you know? And do we want to cause problems where we interrupt the possible funding streams because it looks, and I don't know exactly what's the best way to drive it, you know? For us to get our, you know, make sure our interest is in place prior. That means a larger conversation as well. But I don't know if that's just going to be handled if just us as a council do it. We got.
We have to start somewhere.
I, I get that, but I'm down the road, at what point do we pull this thing together and start talking about, we're looking at various funding streams? And I know that collaboration is difficult, even greater difficulty when you talk about funding, you know? But I hope that we build the facilities that this area needs, like we've, you know, we've blown opportunities in the past, far as I was concerned, that we could have moved forward on something like this. That's how I felt as a taxpayer and a native son. But I, you know, the thing that I want to consider in all this process, that not only we're looking at the fields, but also looking at a greater complex. I don't know if it's going to be on that field. I don't know, you know, planning has to be involved with that. But I know at some point, we don't want to create any isolation. I don't know how that's going to take place. I don't know if we need to have a further conversation in some other manner, we're bringing a few other entities to the table. But I don't want to isolate anybody, you know, before we even start communicating the process, that we start creating problems where we don't receive from those funding streams. Like we say, you got a sports commission, you got tourism, you know, we have county, you know, we don't know what we can do from the state side, you know, trying to figure out all the funding that we can possibly use going forward. I don't want any, anything to be left on the table because of minor disagreements. So we got to figure out how we could do the best together in going, in proceeding forward. You know, we got issues personally here inside our city. We know we, we need recreation. We know we, we are short of spaces. Even when we get the space together, no matter how large it is, it's probably going to be short. We know our seniors aren't being covered in a lot of ways, and the ones in the city have to go out to, you know, in the county to do what they do out there. So we got great needs, we got great needs. We're missing out on balls, you know, the military's going to other areas because we don't have the facilities to have a ball, you know? So I just hope as we go forward, we consider all of this and how best to make this work, so we bring everybody to the table, like I said, understanding that we made an initial outlay, and we, we have a dedication of what we need here from our recreation department. But we also need to make sure we don't isolate any other group, you know, where they decide that they don't want to be a part of it because of some misunderstanding, because we haven't communicated to each other. That's all, and I think that might be some of what you're talking about, you know, Logan. So.
Mr. Bittner, you have anything to add?
Well, I'm thinking that we're probably not all that far apart in our thinking of a committee in charge of the overall scope of this project with the responsibility of pulling together all community resources to get their input on the table. We own the property, we own the debt, it's our responsibility to make sure that investment is done in accordance with the best needs of the community. I see nothing wrong with appointing a committee of the council and making sure they understand, which I'm sure they will, that that's going to be part of their task, is to pull together all these resources to make sure that we are maximizing the opportunities we have for making Jacksonville a better community and a gemstone of a recreation complex. So I'm, I'm going to try and, I'm going to make a motion to appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of mayor, Mayor Phillips as chairman, councilman Warden, and councilman Jackson to begin the process of evaluation of recreation needs of the city and the possible development of the new recreation area, Williamsburg Land, at the end of West Boulevard. And this committee will provide reports on a quarterly basis or as sooner as may be requested by city council.
We need to act on Mr. Sosa's motion first, it's still out there, but keep that in reserve there, just in case. So.
I didn't know he made, he made a motion, okay.
You did make a motion, right? Okay.
Make a larger, invited him to the city council.
What I was about to say is, what I'm hearing, trying to be objective, is pretty much, council member Sosa is pretty much saying the same thing as the motion that Mr. Bittner made, but he's a little bit further down the road with it. Council member Jackson talked about not wanting to alienate business partners, future business leaders, community leaders. And I think that one of the things that our staff has always done in the past is that when we are facing the road less traveled, when we're about to enter, or coming upon a particular area in which we may have limited amount of experience, one of the things that our staff has done is they have done the research with sister cities in terms of looking at educational needs, you know? If, if we look at the city of Wilmington, the city of Kentstown, the city of New Bern, the city of Greenville, each one of those sister cities have independent recreations facilities that they are currently using that is able to attract both their citizens and citizens far away. And I believe that with a very small intimate group at first, to be able to research that, to come back and to advise council, to share with council their findings, then we can move forward in a progressive way to now begin to enlarge that particular group as Mr. Sosa is proposing. So what I'm hearing you are saying is pretty much the futuristic group that is going to come out of the ad hoc group with our mayor and council members, Jackson and Warden.
I'd like to see it happen before that. I mean, I think when you start out with larger committees than just three people to start out.
Right, but sometimes starting out new, you have too many chiefs and not enough Indians.
It also limits the ideas that you come up with, too.
Well, we're not limiting the idea, we're exploring, because if we're using a blank template, we don't necessarily want to develop something that every other city has, because then what is the attraction? If we're talking about futuristic, if we're talking about what recreation activities your children would have, or Mr. Warden's grandchildren, we need to think futuristically, just like we thought with the Jacksonville. we need to think futuristically, just like we thought with the Jacksonville, um, Jack A. M. E. N. We need to bill for the future. So what is our future going to look like? And that's one of the things we need to examine because whatever we decide this future is going to look like, that is going to be the driving theory behind how you develop your sports center. Do we one day want to bring a professional soccer team? Kentston has a professional junior baseball league. Do we hope that we can attract that same type of business here? Do we want to build an Olympic-sized swimming pool that will attract possibly Olympic sports? We could have Olympic champions right here, but because we don't have the facilities, then that opportunity won't exist. So it's not that we're not going to do it. It's just a matter of time that you have to take baby steps when you're talking about building for the future. You have to collaborate. You have to envision what do you have, but what else can you add to the table that no one else has that will make you that particular flagship city with a flagship recreation center that no other city has?
Let me say this. When you mentioned Jack A. M. E. N., and I know we talked about going to see other facilities. I mean, at the committee, never, as far as I know, the net committee, I know my mother's passing or, or transition or passing kind of bumped up to that. But to my understanding, we never took those trips.
But don't forget you were in the middle of pandemic and you still are. I'm just saying.
Still speaking to what you're saying, we never took those trips. So it wasn't, you know, the committee, the recreation committee didn't really, wasn't in that process as vested. I understand what you're saying. But realistically, that's the way it happened. I would hope, you know, the ad hoc committee, you know, I know I would be pushing towards having other partners in it. When you start talking about building the best facilities that we can have in this area, I would hope that we evidently, other areas that have been built these type of facilities, have used other partnerships, and maybe we need to look at that, who's done it best and kind of model off of that. I don't know where they started from. You know, like I said, it's beyond my capacity right now in terms of where that is. Um, I just don't want to lose partners at the beginning. And we have, we have to drive that to make sure they understand that. That's my concern.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second for Mr. Sosa's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I need clarity on what that motion is for the clerk at some point. Would you?
I'd like to make a motion to have a larger starting committee than just if three or four city council members. I think we need to have a committee that will incorporate the county, that incorporate the city, that incorporate tourism.
That's fine.
And, um, business also.
We understand. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Okay. All right. Mr. Bittner, you still want to push your motion out?
Did you count the, the nays, Mayor? I didn't hear you.
I beg your pardon?
You called the nays? I didn't hear you ask for the nays.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, I asked for Mr. Warden, Mr..
The nays. Those are the nays.
I would be nay on his motion.
Nay on his motion. Okay. Nay, 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 nay.
Thank you, sir.
So that would be Mr. Warden, Mr. Thomas, Dr. Washington, and Mayor Pro Tim Bittner.
And I'll second Mayor Pro Tim's motion.
And you got a second on Mayor Pro Tim Bittner's motion. Do you remember, do you still have his motion recorded? Okay. Discussion.
Just, uh, just make a comment. I, uh, I don't disagree with what you want to do. In fact, that's what I want to do, too. I just don't want to start out with full-blown. We have a, as the elected officials, we have the responsibility. We also have the, uh, the accountability. And I want to, us to, to dri-, I want council to drive this, this initiative. We can't do that as a large committee because we, we'd have to have open me-, well, we're going to have open meetings, but, uh, we, if we have four or more, we have a quorum, you have to have announced meetings, you know, through the paper, et cetera, you know, that publish. By keeping it at three, um, we're still going to have council driving this thing. But yet, we, the three members will do report back to, to y'all as a group for, for final say-so. We're not going to be able to do anything without your say-so as far as committing dollars or whatever, or even agreeing to a potential partner. Because there's, you know, a potential partner brings a lot of, lot of, uh, things into, uh, legal discussions, for example. Uh, Mr. Carter's going to have to be involved, uh, especially if we start talking about funding or shared responsibility. Um, if we build, if we build something together as a partnership, uh, how do we, how do we worry about who, who's responsible for, for maintenance, operations, et cetera? We, all that has to be worked out. And there's a lot of details behind the scenes that would have to be worked out. So we, as, as the, 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 uh, the initial committee, is really just trying to drive this thing for, for council to seek out the partners. Uh, Mr. Jackson made a comment that, you know, we don't have a lot of facilities in town because we don't have the, the funding. If we continue to rely just on, on the property tax and the funding that we get now, we're not going to have any more additional facilities. So we need to find those partners that, that you want to bring in. We need to find those folks who, who have, uh, ideas and, and some funding ideas, uh, to bring in some, some additional ideas to, to do, to develop, whatever that may be. Um, so we're, we are going to seek out strategic partners. We are going to find folks who want to invest in the future of Jacksonville. But we want it to be a community-wide, and that's what you want. I know that's what you want. You want a community-driven. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to have public input at some point, I suspect. We're going to have to hire a, at some point, we'll have to hire, once we identify the partners and talk about what they might, what they might offer and bring to the table, we're going to have to hire some sort of a, a land planner, uh, architect, whatever they might be, to help put a, a master plan for the, for the property so that we develop it properly, so that we don't, uh, cut ourselves off for any future growth. You know, don't, let's don't do something in haste to cause a problem for future. So we've got that. So, um, I, we hear you, I hear your, I hear your concerns and I, and I share your vision for bringing in more, more partners into this whole process.
But I guess the thing I don't understand is, so if we have three people that start the thing, so, and we're eventually all agreeing that we're going to get to a larger committee at some point anyways, so what's the three going to do to get to the eight or the 10? Like, wh- where's that gap going to be bridged? That's what I don't understand. Why are we dragging our feet there? I don't, I don't know that we're dragging our feet. I think we need to talk about it and decide. I think we need to, to seek them out rather than just say, we're going to, uh, you, 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 and I'm pointing at other partners, are, are going to be on this committee. Let's, let's find out if they're interested.
Well, we know they're interested.
Some are.
Yeah. There's a lot.
But to what extent? Yes. That's correct. I just don't think we need to be, I just don't think we need to jump in without some sort of a, of a roadmap.
Anyone else? All right. All right. So we have a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Okay. All opposed. Motion carries. We're going to take a break before we carry on. So we're going to stand and assess for a few minutes. It's six o'clock. We're back in session. All right. The next item on the agenda for tonight is our transit contract, and Anthony will be presenting this item for the FY23 budget topic here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So the consensus around the staff table here is that the presentation will be about 45 minutes, and I'm hoping to prove him wrong. I can be concise when I need to. You recall about a month ago, we talked about the budget issue with transit, how it related to two key issues, one of them being the hiring rate of our drivers, labor issue that we're hearing about across the country, and then the other having to do with insurance rates for operating the system. Uh, in an effort to recoup some of those expenses, First Transit sent us a proposal for the upcoming fiscal year. As you recall, we are moving out of our base three-year contract into the two option years. And so they're asking for a change order in, in order to recoup some of that cost. Uh, we looked at this last time. There's a bit of sticker shock when we saw that, almost $400,000 worth of increase over what the current contract says versus what they were asking for, and a pretty significant impact on the general fund. So we weren't very happy with that. Um, we value them as a contractor and, and definitely wanted to give them another shot at, at hopefully coming back with a better number. And, and this is, this is where we are. So the best and final offer is a transit term. It's just a contracting term that they use. But this is the end result of our negotiations with them. And truly what this represents, instead of a proposal at $17 an hour, they brought it down to $15 an hour, which our HR department seemed to agree with a lot more. Um, so other than that, there's really not a whole lot of other cuts in there. Still a pretty significant impact in the total bottom line and then in the general fund as well. So, um, before we asked ourselves whether or not this is something that we wanted to do, because we're spending federal money, the first thing that we have to ask is, is this something that we can do? And, uh, when it comes to change orders, the federal government's very sensitive about those. You know, have a small project and then you change order it up to a huge thing. And we've heard all the jokes before, but, um, they ha-, they have a whole series of questions that you have to ask yourself in determining whether or not a change order is appropriate. And we're not going to go through all those. We're just going to focus on two here because I think these give us the direction on where we have to move forward. Uh, one is, has the scope of work changed? In this particular case, even though the operating environment has changed with COVID and labor and all those things, the actual scope of work has not changed. So we're still operating the same buses, the same miles, same hours. All of that's the same. So that's kind of one strike against being able to do a change order. Uh, the other is, what does the contract say? Because federal rules specifically say that you can't go against what the terms of your contract are. And we wouldn't want to do that anyways. So right now, the contract allows for a, a standard 3% annual cost increase, which First Transit exercises every single year. Uh, that was included in their original proposal several years ago when we selected them. Uh, but it also says that mutual, the, the parties can mutually amend the contract if the scope of work changes by plus or minus 10%. Now that relates to the first question, has the scope of work changed? And the answer is no. So really, that leaves us in a position where I don't feel we have any other option at this point other than go back out to the market. So you recall, one of the options that we talked about last time we were together is to putting together an RFP, getting it out on the street, kind of expediting that process and coming up with a new contract for next year. And that's, of course, why we started this early with this particular item, because we knew it was going to take a long time to do that. So barring any concerns from council, the intent is to move forward with an RFP. We expect for that to go out early December, and then for the results to be back, say, mid-January is, is what we're hoping. Uh, that would put us on a timeline to come and talk to council about it in, in February, preferably at the fir-, at the first meeting, but more than likely the second meeting. And then from there, we can get direction from council on what the results of the solici-, solicitation were, and then also look at other options that may be available for us before we continue forward with the budgeting process for fiscal 23. Some of the concerns we have, of course, limited responders. You know, that's something that we faced every single time that we put a RFP out on the street. It's a very isolated location for some of these contractors, uh, and it's a relatively small contract. So generally speaking, we only get a couple of response, responses. Uh, last time, we got First Transit, and we also got Onslow United Transit. So we'll, we'll just have to put it out there, advertise it the best that we can, and try to get, try to get the best response. Uh, bids could be same or higher. Um, we're not expecting them to come in lower than the current contract. They may be lower than the First Transit proposal that, that we just looked at a second ago, but we do not anticipate that the cost would be lower than the current contract, simply because the market has changed. And of course, that has to do with the wages and insurance issues that First Transit is talking about. You know, that's an industry-wide thing. That's not something that they are just struggling with. So any of the responses that we get will very likely reflect those market changes in, in cost. So again, um, recommendation is to move forward with an RFP, release that as soon as we possibly can, solicit interest in a new contract, and then come back in February and continue conversations with the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions you may, may have.
So the, uh, offer, their last offer will, will stand, I guess, no matter what we do, right? If we, it's not, they're not going to back out just because we advertised for other bids or?
It will give them the opportunity to resubmit. So once we go past this offer, we, we cannot accept this offer. But what they could choose to do is resubmit this offer when we put the RFP out, uh, next month. We would hope that they would do that. Maybe they could continue to sharpen their pencil and do a little bit better. But again, the, the rules that, that FTA has for change orders just simply don't allow us to move forward with this. And as you recall, we ran into a very similar situation with NV Transportation about three years ago. Same rules, same issue.
And just for the public to, to remember, what are the services that First Transit's actually providing?
First Transit provides the operators, the bus drivers. So the city owns the vehicles. We maintain the vehicles. We maintain all of the assets, so the bus stops, Jacksonville Station, which was mentioned earlier. Uh, and what First Transit does is they provide the administration and the operation of the buses.
How about the insurance?
Meaning, these are?
Insurance. Who pays?
So the, the insurance, the city actually insures the vehicles, and so does the contractor. And that's one of the concerns that they are, have proposed, proposed to us, is that the insurance rates have continued to go up the three years that they've been with us here in Jacksonville. And one thing that they did say was that it, it really has nothing to do with Jacksonville. It's just industry-wide. Uh, so that same insurance rate applies to First Transit in North Carolina or First Transit in California.
What's the difference in the insurance? You see, both the city and First Transit provide insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a differentiation on the policy?
Well, we insure the buses for when we're operating them. So for instance, when we have to take them down to Wilmington to get serviced at the specialty mechanic, or when the, uh, folks at Fleet are bringing them in and out, uh, for, for service. Um, but the insurance would be the same as if we were operating the vehicles on a day-to-day basis. The, the, the league doesn't see a difference between, you know, just operating them for maintenance or operating them on a daily basis. Now, they provide insurance as kind of the first-line of defense for when the vehicle is operating. So if the vehicle is in an incident, okay, the, we always direct the, the, um, the concerned party, the person involved in the incident or impacted by the incident, to First Transit. Their insurance take cares of, takes care of it and reimburses us for the cost for repairs.
So what is Plan B?
Plan B, well, we're actually oper-, uh, we're actually executing on Plan B right now. Plan A was to see whether or not we could do this, and Plan A is not working out for us right now. So Plan B is to go forward with the solicitation, see what the results are. Uh, question about Plan C is, we might have to look at an in-house operation.
I guess I skipped a point. I was, I was talking about Plan C. What do we do if we don't have anyone bid on it?
Mm-hmm. That's not something that I wanted to bring to you tonight because I think this is the most prudent next step for us, is to at least explore the market. But you can guarantee in, in February that we will be exploring that, that option.
Is that when their contract runs out?
Excuse me, sir?
When does the contract run out?
It, it runs out on June 30. Mm-hmm. But the thing about it is, is there has to be an overlap period for us to do whatever we're going to do, bring in a new contractor or execute a new contract with them or bring it in-house. We're going to have to start that before. We're going to have to start that before they, you know, their contract ends on June 30.
Why do you not do it in-house? Like, what's the con against that?
Well, I think the main reason we don't do it in-house was because we didn't have the expertise or the staff to do that when we started the system in 2007. Okay? So this was an easy and low-risk way for us to start up the system. Contractor took the heavy load in operating a business that we didn't really know a whole lot about at that time, right? But that has somewhat changed over time. We've learned a lot more about it. I think the last time, well, actually, I know the last time we talked about this, the main reason we decided to contract out as opposed to bringing it in-house was because the benefit of having that extra layer of liability protection. You know, the contractor is the first-line kind of defender of the system, so if something happens while they're operating the bus, you know, they're responsible for dealing with it.
There's also another aspect, and that is wages and benefits. Most of these drivers are simply part-time drivers. If you get past a certain number of hours, for example, 1,000 hours a year, you're automatically required to get into the North Carolina retirement system. Well, if they're city employees, that has a financial impact on us. On the other hand, if they are employees of the private sector, they can simply say, your job is absolutely no benefits, but what we're going to pay is $15 an hour. The other thing to look at is that the wage scales that we're struggling with, the wage scales that we're struggling with right now for our own employees, the private sector can pay $17 an hour. If we start paying bus drivers $17 an hour, suddenly we have to look at all of our employees who are currently struggling to even get them all up to $15 an hour. I would tell you that as the manager, the very last thing that I would want us to consider is inhousing this. There is too much liability and the financial wage issue. It's not just how much do you pay these, whatever the number is, 20 drivers. It's the ripple it has to the whole organization. But again, I think what you're going to find is that First Transit's done a good job. They lost the contract in Wilmington, which has hurt them in this region. They do want to keep this contract with us. I think you'll find that they will submit a bid. I think you're going to find that the numbers you see on the screen are probably the numbers they're going to give. But at the end of the day, as Anthony has very adequately said in less than three minutes, is that we've looked, the federal regulations simply don't allow us to get there the way that the contract, the contract does not allow us to get there the way that First Transit wants. The only way we can continue with First Transit is them either substantially reducing their finances, which they've said no, or going out for an RFP.
And really, time will tell. And that's why, again, we started really, really early on this one, because we wanted to provide enough time to go out for solicitation and also provide council enough opportunity to make a decision on this before we have to execute.
Yeah. I was going to ask you, basically, you asked the question, is what type of service? How do you, what do you think about the service they provided? And I also was going to ask how much you think that we've been saving, but you can't tell. It's one of those, there's no really model if you haven't had that type of service in the past, that we haven't given that service in-house.
What we do is, is that we know how the system runs, you know? So we will be able to make a comparison. But again, only time will tell. To answer your first question, First Transit's done an excellent job. We're very satisfied with them. I mean, this is simply a business decision. This has nothing to do with their customer service or, you know, anything else other than the dollars and cents. And like Richard said, the rules, you know, we have to follow the rules because somebody else is paying the majority of the bill. And so we'll take it one step at a time. We'll come back and see you in February, and we'll hopefully make some good decisions then.
Thank you. This is a human resources leadership presentation.
Mayor and councils, I recognize that you've been here a long time tonight, but I think that the item that's coming up is one that you're going to find very refreshing. For many years, the mayor and council have had a vision and mission for what you want the community to be. It's come to my attention that we really don't have a vision and mission for the city organization internally. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation from a group of our young leaders who have taken on the challenge of creating an internal vision and mission for us as city employees that try to fulfill the vision and mission that you have. This time, I'd like to turn it over to James Treadwell and his group, please.
You did that much more quickly than Anthony did.
If I could take a minute and introduce the group of individuals that were assigned to the City Managers Project. Is Ms. Tracy Jackson with the Neighborhood Improvement Services.
Please stand up.
Mr. Will Sample with the Parks Department. Mr. Nick Broniger with Recreation. Captain James with the Police Department. Chief Tallman with the Fire Department. And Kelly Cannon with the Streets Division in Public Services. We also had Sabrina Adams from Finance and Pierre Davis from Public Services and Engineering as well, who are not able to be with us this evening. When people say the city of Jacksonville, our natural response or our thought is, one city, a caring community. Projects, programs, and initiatives are rolled out with one thought in mind, and that is, how is this going to benefit the city? Specifically, how is this going to benefit the citizens of Jacksonville? As an organization, we house multiple departments and divisions that provide several services, ranging from transportation, public safety, parks and recreation, to public services and so on. All of these services are carried out on a day-to-day basis with one thought and one thought only in mind, and that is to provide good, quality customer service. Council's adopted mission and vision reminds us to be effective, efficient, and economical with our resources, and to be a part of making this the best city to live, work, and play. While working together on the City Manager Special Project, it was refreshing to learn that we all pretty much had the same thoughts in mind. The only trick was identifying which way to come together in order to best articulate the same message. Whether you call it the Silver Tsunami, the Brain Drain, or something else, it is apparent that our organization has challenges which lie ahead. And our hope is that you will receive our thoughts and ideas with the same sincerity and integrity that they were developed with by our team. And without further delay, I'll have Ms. Tracy Jackson present to you our vision.
When we developed our vision, we wanted to engage, inspire, and develop our good people of today to be great leaders of tomorrow. Our vision included engaging our team members to participate in special projects and events while inspiring them, inspiring them to think outside the box, especially during day-to-day activities. Good people are hired by the city every day, and all employees have the opportunities to be leaders. We want to develop these leaders with training, career goals, along with coaching and mentoring. And as a result, these employees will be intentional to do what's best for the city. And as a result, we will transform those employees into be great leaders of the city of Jacksonville. Now, along with our vision, there is a mission, and Will Sample will share the mission with you.
Our mission, to create a high-performing team that provides excellent customer service, empowering good people, using good systems with good intentions. Now, a high-performing team is one that is highly focused on their goals and achieves superior results, and that's what we strive for every day with the city of Jacksonville. Now, to help push us through our mission, we would develop programs and initiatives, bridge the gap to becoming a leader, encourage our employees, educate our employees, and create team building and department challenges throughout the city. These few objectives will help aid in us getting through our mission. Next, we have Nick with our first objective.
All right. Our first objective we have is to develop programs and initiatives to inspire in each city employee a public servant attitude and passion. As public servants, we not all have the opportunity to be out in the forefront of the public. We have people in water billing, IT, who don't have the opportunity to do what myself in Recreation or Public Works or Streets have the opportunity to showcase. So the goal of this initiative is to give everybody the chance to showcase their pride they have in the city and to be part of a committee. We are going to solicit members from each of the departments in the city to have their own voice in this committee, to present a topic or a community outreach project, or I know we do great work with the Children Nation recently for Help Feed the Kids. So the goal is to get everybody a chance to be on this committee to voice a project or initiative that they feel would be beneficial to the city. And we'll use this one sitting moment to help with this program, to go through our media department. We want to show the public that we take pride in what we do for you, and that it's more than just our everyday nine, eight-to-five job or police force, fire force, fire force extra hour. So this objective is something that we're going to reach and want to showcase to the public, that we're here for them and we're more than what you see every day. So our next objective that we're going to go through is with Captain Chuck James.
Good evening. So one of the biggest things that I look at as a leader is, how are we building up our leaders for tomorrow? Right? So we have to start by bridging the gap to becoming a leader within an organization by creating opportunities for city employees. So I've been with the Police Department 24 years. Mayor Phillips was a deputy chief at the Police Department. How am I going to start to work my way up to somebody that ultimately is going to retire? You know, the chief is going to retire one day. I'm going to retire one day. How am I building up those people underneath me to take my place for the future? We have so many different internal things that we can be doing that we just, we get busy, you know? We have 1,000 things on our plate that we're constantly working on, but we need to make time. And if we're not doing good succession planning, we're going to fail in the future. Succession planning is huge. I was just talking to Gail, and she was telling me how I was her best friend dealing with the budget and so forth.
She said it?
No, she did not.
How huge is the budget, though?
Having people within your organization, your separate entity, if it's IT with Terrence, and how the budget deals with the Police Department or the Fire Department, you know, or how does budget deal with, you know, dealing with Parks and Rec? Having somebody within your internal department to be able to deal with those different things, or just within IT or Parks and Rec, we have to be able to build up those different people. So we start some type of mentor, mentee-type program that we can lift these different people up. It's not going to cost the city anything, but it's something that we have got to step outside of our comfort zone and make sure that we're trying to do that with some of these people. The City, the Police Department, a couple of years ago, the chief has sent a couple of people off, and the International Association Chiefs of Police started an organization. It was leadership in professional police organizations. That's something that we do internally. We could send so many of our different leaders, supervisors from different departments through that training. That's something that we host here, and we can even amend that training. So it does not just gear towards public service, I'm sorry, fire and police. It could be something that could affect everyone as far as those leaders. How am I going to affect change and generational differences and things of that nature, being able to speak to that? So these are things that we're already doing internally. We don't need to go and hire another organization to come in and do it for us. All right. The next thing we're going to talk about is, T is going to come up about education.
In order to engage, inspire, and develop these future leaders, our third objective was to educate these employees on the capabilities, services, and details of what other departments and divisions of the city do. We want to take advantage of the city's SharePoint site and do short, weekly, or bi-weekly videos on what's going on in the city and what may be coming in the future. We'd like to highlight different departments and divisions as well. Some examples would be highlighting stormwater and the progress of the Oyster Highway, or the partnership between multiple city divisions on the cleaning up derelict vessels in the river. Have Parks post a video about the changing of flowers at the different gardens within the city during the different seasons, and the new gateways going up to the city's entrances. Explain all of the planning, coordination, and cooperation it takes for the Fire Department to conduct a live burn with other city departments, like Neighborhood Improvement Services, Streets, Utilities, Sanitation, Media, and JPD. Also, we'd like to give employees the opportunity to gain experiences with these different departments and divisions through hands-on training, scenarios, and tabletop exercises. Some examples would be counseling coaching sessions with employees, running a meeting, completing evaluations, budget prep, presenting at council meetings and workshops, and storms and other major events that they may have to face during their time here. Finally, to get more employee involvement by encouraging them to research and provide input for identifying and implementing solutions and ideas for the challenges and opportunities facing the city. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kelly Cannon.
Good evening, mayor and council. Our fourth objective that we looked at was provide employees with the opportunity to be assigned to and participate in various city internal committees, therefore creating education, information, and awareness of the operational functions of the city, also creating opportunities for innovation and change in the organization. And a couple of ways we looked at doing this was first, looking at our internal committees and finding out, you know, grabbing together, putting arms around, how many do we have? And also reviewing those committees to make sure they're still valid, and with making sure that they're valid, that we put our personnel in the right spots to move the city forward and making sure we have this innovation and change. The second thing we looked at was meet and greets throughout the organization, different organizations. You've heard this probably many times, talked about divisions going to different divisions and see how they operate. How do they do stuff on their side of the fence? I know in Public Works, we were pretty tight-knit. We know how things work there. But working with Parks and Rec, sometimes we might not know exactly how they operate. And it would be beneficial to have our individuals go see how they do work day-to-day, how they operate in meetings, and vice versa, bringing them over to our side of the fence and see how we do things the right way. And that was a joke. Glad that fell flat. But anyway, that's the thing, is just intermingling throughout our divisions and throughout the city, so our folks understand how we operate day-to-day and give them more ownership, more buy-in into the larger piece of the pie that we call our city. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Captain James to finish this out.
All right. So kind of touched off a little of what Kelly just said, and a lot of those objectives, this is the last one, but a lot of those objectives are pretty heavy. So if I go to and I want to talk to a bunch of city employees, hey, I have something else that I am going to give you, and I need you to do this, right? It's going to be, oh, God, this is one more thing I got to read, this is one more thing I'm going to have to do, I got evaluations, and so on and so forth. We need to find ways internally to build morale, to work on fellowship. Kelly was just talking about different things that, you know... Kelly was just talking about different things that, you know, people in the streets may be doing or Parks and Rec and all that. 24 years I've been sitting, I've sat on many committees. I don't, I can't tell you what some of the other people do. I see a city truck and I'm not sure what they're doing. This majestic beard that I have right now, No Shave November, right? Three, I think it was three years now we've been doing this and all the money raised goes to St. Jude's, great organization, right? It's built up morale. That was one good thing that, you know, the chief has let us do it for this month. And the officers, you know, we have an officer sitting in the back has a nice majestic beard on underneath that face mask right now, you know? But it's something that they enjoy. That could be an easy thing that we could try to do with other departments. And we're trying to raise money, right, for St. Jude's? Okay, so the Police Department's going to, you know, compete against the Fire Department or Transit or something like that. These are just little small things that we can do internally. We used to have the city, the city day that we had the barbecue and different things like that where we tried to get everybody together, you know, just to kind of get out, meet one another, and it didn't really cost us a whole lot of money to try to go out and invest and show, hey, look, we do care about you, we know that you're not just punching a clock, we actually want you to be happy here, you know? We know that we can't, you know, this is government work, we can't give you a million dollars to go and do this job, but we want you to know that we're here for you, we're investing in you, and we want to see you succeed. Nick also talked about the CHU program, you know? There's tons of different fundraisers and talking to some of my peers in Wilmington Police Department, Greenville Police Department, they do different things. They went, and it was a fire truck pull that the Police Department and the Fire Department did and they had raised money and a lot of that, they were trying to get canned goods, you know, and it was who could do it and pull the fire truck the farthest, you know? Obviously, we all know that the Police Department would win that, but it's doing these small internal things that we can have a little bit of fun, it's not going to cost us anything. But in the big scheme of things, what are we doing? We're building that morale, that fellowship, and I'm able to joke with a fireman, you know, or somebody in another entity that I wouldn't normally ever get to speak to, you know? So, thank you very much. I'm going to let James come on back up here and round things up for us.
I think if you took any group of employees and you put them together and asked them to identify a mission and a vision for the city as an organization, one common theme would resonate, and that's an intention to grow our human capital to prepare for the challenges of tomorrow. So, we'd ask that you join us to engage, inspire, and develop our good people of today to be great leaders of tomorrow and create a high-performing team that provides excellent customer service, empowering good people using good systems with good intentions. Thank you.
In closing, I would like to tell you that these people came up with this. It was not my intention to do anything other than to give them an assignment. I did not critique it other than read it and discuss to make sure I understood it. You will notice in the copy that's in front of you, it's already been signed. This is not something that the mayor and council are being asked to endorse, it's for education for you to know that as the manager, I have authorized these things internally. These people have come up with this. They are your future, and it's only through their efforts that we will be able to accomplish the vision and the mission and the objectives that have been laid out. These people have spent literally hours putting this together, not the presentation. I'm talking about the fact that they were divided into three teams. Each team was allowed to come up with their own vision and mission, then they had to work together to come down to one, they had to create their own objectives. But beyond that, what their next assignment is, is to explain this to the city employees. I want you and the public to understand, this is not the vision of the city manager. This is the vision of the city employees as to what they want their workplace and their coworkers to experience and be. You've already clapped for them once, please join me and thank you again. The last thing I will say on this is, look at what you've heard. Transition is coming to this community, transition's coming to this organization. The great thing is, look at these, this is your future. These are the people who will take the next step in their careers, and I think you can be very confident, especially after hearing them tonight. Thank you.
Well, as a mayor, I got one thing, I'd say one thing, I love what I've heard. It's, that's a great idea. I was very blown away by what, by your comments and your enthusiasm about pursuing this. Made me feel good. I know that night when I leave here, I'm going to have a lot better feeling about the future of this city. You know, I know a lot of us are aging out and, you know, the cream is definitely going to rise to the top, I feel, after what I've heard tonight. And thank you so much for your effort and your dedication.
Talking about future leaders, here's one of your current future leaders.
You get me again. So, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council for allowing me to come up here and speak tonight about the Fire Department and Station 4. If you indulge me a little bit, I'd like to do a brief review of the Fire Department, but our operating budget for this year is $8.5 million with 88 personnel, which includes our operational staff, our admin staff, and our prevention staff, with three part-time and four over-hiring the firefighter positions. We operate out of four stations, round-the-clock service 365 days a year, spread out over three shifts. They work a 24-hour shift from eight to eight, which makes up three battalions. Our calls for service, we go to everything, even getting the city manager out of a lift on the side of his house. But our meat and potatoes are fire calls, EMS calls, hazmat, and technical rescue, which is our water rescue, confined space rescue, and urban search and rescue. Fire Station 1, which we're celebrating an anniversary this month, we're seven years in this station this month. So, it's, the building's been a blessing to us. And as you can see, I'll mention this several times in the presentation, when they moved the station and built it here, they moved the apparatus base out on 17 to give us access to a major thoroughfare. But we run four pieces of equipment out of that station, which make up non-personnel, and some of our specialty equipment, which is Boat 1, our technical rescue trailer, and our UTV. Also, you remember just over a year ago, we switched some of our apparatus between Station 1 and Station 3 to provide a higher level of service to the city. We switched Ladder 1 and Rescue 1, and they've been providing positive results for our citizens. Fire Station 2, which we moved out of Northwoods, out on the Gum Branch Road, another major thoroughfare, to kind of help with the demand of Williamsburg Parkway and the intersection of Western to Gum Branch Road. We moved into there in 2016, so that's been five years. It has five personnel with Engine 2, Squad 2, one of our reserve engines, and a rehab trailer. Fire Station 3, that's after the trees took down, but it doesn't show our brand-new generator. But we have eight personnel there with an engine, a rescue, and a squad, and that's where Boat 2 and Engine 6 is, and that's in the Brenmar area. Speaking of the thoroughfares, again, that's a station that has benefited from the realignment of White Street and Huff Drive and access to the bypass, and probably a decade or so ago when they extended Huff Drive all the way through to Corbin. The star of the show tonight, Station 4, over in the Commons, which has four to five personnel, two apparatus, a Quint and a Squad, and our hazmat trailer. We moved into this station in 2001, so we've been in there for 20 years. A little history on this station, where Dick's and Big Lots is now, I don't know if you all remember, but we had two single-wide trailers that were T-boned together. We refer to it as the T-Bone Deluxe. That was Station 4, back there behind there, and we actually kept the Quint back there in the old lumberyard, so it was in there. We moved to the current site in 2001, and we added a kitchen and restrooms in 2012, 2015, and we actually added some bedrooms, modified some offices, some office space that EMS had, and turned them into bedrooms and day rooms. Talking about station locating, some of those key factors, if you look at the Fire Department's mission statement, we've been talking about mission statements tonight, the first five words are to provide excellent customer service. That's our number-one goal, and that's service delivery. Our three priorities on any incident, first and foremost and always, is life safety. That's the life safety of the citizens of Jacksonville, the customers of Jacksonville, and also our employees. I know Chief Yanero used to be a firefighter back in Bristol. The fires he fought back then aren't the fires we fight today. They grow much faster, exponentially quicker, they're hotter, and more dangerous. Also, cardiac arrest, CPR events. Percentages say that every minute that goes by, a person has 7% to 10% chance less of surviving. Also, with that time without oxygen, neurological deficit set in, cardiac muscle dies, so the sooner we can get there to provide those resuscitation efforts, provide that oxygen, leads to a more positive outcome. Also, with our trauma patients, I don't know if you've ever heard the term of the golden hour, but our goal is to get those patients loaded up and on a surgeon's table within an hour to increase their chances of survival. The other two, incident stabilization, as soon as we can get there and mitigate the problem, everything should go away, and as always, property conservation. Another thing we look at is the location of the other stations too, because we don't want to duplicate efforts, we want to provide the best level of service, and also on certain type of calls, we're sending multiple apparatus to those calls for staffing levels. And then we look at call volumes. Where are the majority of these calls happening within the city? Other factors, we talk about this all the time, is our ISO rating, which we currently sit at a two. ISO looks at all of our fire calls within the city. The thing that ISO cares most about is travel distance, optimum being a two-and-a-half-mile travel over road miles, with five being the maximum. Accreditation is, they look at all incidents, and they look at the total call time. So, that's the time that the dispatcher gets the call, the time it takes the dispatch, the time it takes for us to get out of the station, and the time it takes for us to get on scene. If you'll look right here, we have a heat map within the city of Jacksonville. The gray is no calls, the blue is the fewest amount of calls, and as it gets more red, those are the highest volume of calls. You can see right here on the map, these are the fire calls, the main red area right there around Western and 17, the Walmart, the hotels, all along that Western Extension corridor in downtown. For over these three years, this makes up almost 3,000 calls. The next is another heat map that shows the distribution of our EMS calls. Also, you can see right here at Western and 17, we have a lot of calls at the hotels, the Walmarts, that commercial corridor, you see a lot between Henderson and Gum Branch on Western with the apartment complexes, and then a lot downtown, it's kind of spread out in more of those areas. But this makes up over 9,000 calls over those three years. We want to talk about fire distance. This is the entire city with all stations. The lime green that you see here represents two-and-a-half road miles. The yellow represents five road miles of travel from each station. As you can see, the city is well-covered with those two-and-a-half and five miles. This is Station 4 sitting at the Commons. Now, if you look at this time, this is, excuse me, this map, this is the response times. This doesn't factor in dispatch time, this doesn't factor in turnout time, which could be upwards of two minutes, this is just travel time within the city. The dark green is one minute, the lime green is three minutes, the mustard is five minutes, and the red is seven minutes. As you can see right here with the current station location, there's some red areas at the back end of Carolina Forest where it takes an awful lot of time to get to, and that main corridor right there at Western and 17 is that five-minute response time. The location factors for Station 4, first of all, is there anything available? When we built Station 2, we needed almost three acres to put that station on. Second is the price of the land. I know Station 4, that district, is a highly commercial area with a lot of road furniture along Western Extension, which tends to be very high-priced land. Also, we look at traffic volume and access to the highway like we talked about with Station 1, Station 2, and Station 3, and we look at those response time and distance maps too, as kind of a gauge to predict what may happen. Also, we look at those ISO and accreditation recommendations and how a new location may affect it. Our location options for Station 4, we can stay right where we're at. The station is in a good location, it serves that district well. Also, we can, we looked at Western and Henderson, back there behind Wilmington Health, across from the courtyard. We also looked at Western Boulevard and Carolina Forest, that intersection there. We looked at Western and Highway 17 where that high call volume is. And we also looked at a place right there at Marketplace Drive in Commons Gateway North. Here's another map showing the response distance, those two-and-a-half and five miles again. And as you can see, if we move Station 4 right there behind the Wilmington Health, we still got excellent coverage across the city. A response distance from Carolina Forest and Western, still great coverage of the two-and-a-half and five miles. The same thing here as well with 17 and Western, we still get that coverage. Now, the response times, this is where we have some fluctuations. If you look at Henderson and Western, you can see we get those one-to-three-minute calls right out there close to that intersection, but we turn more mustard in the Commons, and we have some mustard areas in Carolina Forest and there at 17 and Western. At Carolina Forest Boulevard and Western, you can see we have excellent coverage right there along Western Boulevard between Henderson and Gum Branch, but as we move closer to 17, those times increase. We also, we also have better coverage in the back portion of Carolina Forest. Highway 17 and Western, obviously, we have excellent coverage right there at the intersection, but Commons, the times start to increase, and then as you get into the back of Carolina Forest, the times really increase. Some of the issues that we're facing with Station 4 is a lack of support space. We've got storage for our hazmat, our extra hazmat supplies, our extra turnout gear on top of the offices. We have turnout gear that's stored in racks that's exposed to the elements. The workout equipment that the men and women use at that station is actually on the bay floor between the apparatus. In this cleaning janitorial, the supplies we use to maintain our equipment is stored in cabinets in the hallways. There's also a lack of sweet, excuse me, a lack of sleeping quarters, and the firefighters and engineers' bedroom, they're actually sharing beds. This has really been a challenge with the pandemic and social distancing, and also when we up-staff for major events like hurricanes as well. Also, there's outdated and inadequate restrooms. We've made some improvements there where they can actually take a shower in the station, but we just have one shower for four to five personnel and just two bathrooms. Also, an overall need for the update of the station. These offices and bedrooms, they actually empty out to the bay floor, so they're exposed to the exhaust from the trucks coming in and out. And the offices on the side that we share with EMS, there's doorways going to both sides, so they're exposed to the exhaust and the ambulances coming back and forth through the station. Also is congestion. As you know, the county's interested in that site. If they continue to add on like they're proposing, it could add to more traffic, congestion, parking, buildings that the Fire Department may have to negotiate. Some facts on Station 4 and the coverage, it covers almost four square miles, 23 road miles in the district, which represents 18% of the city, and they answered 626 calls, which is 26% of the city's calls. Right now, I've got a little video to kind of give a tour and a refresher of Station 4 if media would bring it up. 4, if media would bring it up.
Good evening. I'm sitting at Station 4, which has served the citizens of Jacksonville for the past 20 years. Tonight, I'd like to talk about some options moving forward with this station. As the city has grown, the needs for this station have grown. I'd like to talk about some opportunities that we'd like to address moving forward in the future with things like bedrooms and locations, office space, restrooms, kitchens, workout areas, turnout gear storage, hazmat storage, and other amenities that go into the station to help the men and women of this fire department serve the citizens of Jacksonville. I'm standing now where that engine just left. As you can see down this side of the building, these rooms open up to the bay floor where the exhaust from the apparatus and the lack of clearance creates safety and health concerns for the firefighters at this station. With the bunked-down dormitories for our firefighters at this station, it's also created challenges with lack of space and also creating social distancing issues during the pandemic over the past year and a half. These are some additional bedrooms that open up to the bay floor. Here's the office that the firefighters and engineers use to complete their work, which also opens up to the bay floor. This area here also creates challenges with the storage of our flammable and combustible liquids that we use for our saws and equipment, our SCBA bottles, our fire prevention materials, and the cleaning supplies that we use on a daily basis here at this station. This is our workout area. This creates challenges as well when you have several people here trying to work out at the same time. The equipment is very close together. It's close to our hazmat trailer, our squad, and our engine. Right here, you'll see our hazmat trailer, which also takes up a lot of space. This is something that our hazmat techs and fire department members utilize and train on on a very regular basis. This is our restroom area. Back in 2014, this shower was added, so our personnel wouldn't have to go to the building next door. Over here, you'll see an office that our station's captain used that opened up to the bay floor as well. You can see the door behind it there, which led, leads to the EMS bay, which actually has apparatus coming in and out on a routine basis there as well. Right here, you'll see our turnout gear storage. This stuff is stored out on the bay floor, which is open to the elements at times. This turnout gear is very expensive, and it's very crucial to the protection of our men and women. This is the day room for our firefighters. When they get the moment, they get a chance to come in and unwind and relax in the evenings. As you can see, it opens to the bay floor here, and there's a door there that actually leads to the bay floor where the ambulances are constantly coming in and out for the county. Our squad hanging cords to keep the trucks charged up. And as you can see, we've even had to put turnout gear storage in the breezeway here between us and EMS. And this is also a room here that we've utilized for storage as well. While looking at some of the options to address the challenges that we face in addition to the side of the station or land that the city actually owns, but the county is leasing from us. Thank you for taking this walk around Station 4 with me. We've met challenges, we've addressed them, but we have more challenges going forward.
So some of the location challenges of Station 4, as you know, it's kind of tucked back in the Commons, is, first of all, is limited exits. There's four main exits out of that neighborhood, Gateway North, Gateway South, Empire, and McDaniel Drive. Also is the road design and speed bumps. There's several speed bumps going through that neighborhood. Every time that client has to respond, they have to go over those speed bumps. The curves in Gateway North and Gateway South, I believe there's speed bumps on McDaniel too, not to change the subject, but the curves with the gateway is also a challenge for that apparatus. They can barely get above 15 miles an hour on those curves when responding to that calls with that truck. High traffic volumes, as we all know, the Commons is a popular place, especially with the commercial development along Western, getting out of those gateways, the traffic backs up a lot. A lot of pedestrian traffic where people are enjoying the running trails, the bike trails, and wildlife traffic as well. There's also future development with what is going on down Western Extension, back behind Carolina Forest, back on the other side of Ramsey Road. It's further away from that station as well in those remote annexations. Another thing that we'd like to take advantage of is the future with the Parkway Extension, trying to forecast exactly where it's going to go and optimizing either where Station 4 is now or if we change locations and how we would access that Parkway.
Is this where I tag you in, Dr. Wood?
T has done an excellent, let's do that, take two. T has done an excellent job giving you an overview of the fire department. Why? Well, it's a budget issue. More than a budget issue though, it's an opportunity that we need to talk with you about relative to the county. The county has offered to purchase Station 4. They also want to purchase the eight acres that are currently under the lease. As John has talked to you in the past, while the Commons is in the ownership of the city, you have a 99-year lease with the county for the eight acres where the EOC sits, and guess what? Where Station 4 sits. You also have a 99-year lease on the additional land where the tower is. The county has offered to pay $1 million for the eight acres and the station. Why? Because they are in the process of expanding the EOC. They need more space for the EMS units. They would like to use the full station and house the EMS folks there. They would like for the city to be moved out in two to three years. Again, why? Expanding the EOC, EMS, and they have a concern about congestion. Here's some considerations. The station is a joint-use station. There was a lot of vision that went into creating this station as a joint-use station, and it has served well for a long time. It's now over 20 years that it has worked well. With the issues that the county is talking about, I have to tell you, as the manager, I have concern as to whether it's putting six pounds in a five-pound bag. You put all of the additional EOC activities, all of the additional EMS activities, they're going to put EMS units there more whether they buy the station from us or not. You're going to wind up with, if you pardon the bluntness, about eight pounds in a five-pound bag. The other issue is you still have a 99-year lease, about 75 years are remaining, and one of the considerations is money. The station does not meet personnel needs, as you have seen. We have a lot of options. One is to sell and move. Well, you're looking at $3.5 million. Now, you could bond that. How much is the new location going to cost? That's not included in $3.5 million. The cost of enlarging the station itself would be about $1.5 million. And enlarging means that you would go, as you remember T showing you, the side of the building, there is dirt there. Interestingly enough, we own that dirt, but we actually don't control it because we leased it to the county. Now, I'm pretty confident that the county would be willing to work out us releasing it back for the property we leased to them. I'm not quite sure how that worked, Mr. Carter would work that out. The timeline is if you want to build a new station, you're looking at three years. Now, you might do it a little bit quicker, but in order to get the land secured, in order to get the architectural plans, to get all the bonding in place, and to build a station, two to three years. On enlarging the station, about 18 months. And then, in addition to Station 4, you're going to have to face in the near future issues with Station 3, because everything you saw in the video about Station 4 is true of Station 3. All the hot bunking, all of the limited space, everything you saw, it's there in Station 3. And then, of course, another consideration is the county. They want an answer as soon as possible. Why? Because they've hired an architectural firm to lay out their concept plans, and if they know that the fire department is staying, they're going to go one direction. If they know the fire department is leaving, they're going to go in another direction. Options are three, they're pretty simple. Remain where it is in the facility, just like it is. Expand on the current site, or new location and a new station. When you look at funding, if you remain in the current location, you're really not going to do much in the way of expenditures. Why? Why would you put money into a station that you know eventually you're going to need to move? If you expand in the current location, it's total city funding of about $1.5 million. If you go to a new location and a new station, you're at least going to have some of that expense paid by the county buying your property and buying your station. The nice thing is, it's a capital asset, you could get into borrowing, so you wouldn't have to have, have to actually find the $2.5 million plus or minus that you'd need in one budget. Here's some questions that we need direction. If you feel comfortable giving them tonight, if you want to give them in a couple of weeks, but in order to have the county understand where you are as a council, we do need some answers to some of these questions. I think the first question is, from what you've seen, do you agree that Station 4 has issues that we have to address? Second question is, how do you feel about actually selling the eight acres of land to the county? Now, those are two pretty basic questions. You've got a 99-year lease, 75 years left, how do you feel about selling the land to Does the mayor and council prefer to leave Station 4 as it is now, expand Station 4 in its current location, or study new locations? And do you generally agree with the whole concept of selling the station to the county? Now, while you ponder that, let's talk about a proposed location. You've heard T say that the station's not actually in a bad location. I will tell you that back when, I believe, Mr. Bittner and others negotiated this location, it was under a different annexation law, and it was put there because your stations, you try to locate them at the hub of a two-and-a-half-mile radius. Well, we know today that annexations are still occurring in that area, and they're occurring how? Brand-new development. Within the shadow of this picture that's on the wall here, or on the screen here, we can tell you that just up the road, Tony Sides is building about 500 single-family homes. We know that on the backside of Carolina Forest, there's about 100 homes coming up with one development, another 100 homes coming up with another. We know that as those occur, they will need city water and sewer, and therefore they will annex. The interesting thing is how many fire calls and EMS calls the city answers out of this station for developments and don't pay any taxes, because we have mutual aid agreements. Now, one of these days, someone is going to stand in front of you and suggest that we not answer calls except for people who pay us taxes, but that's not the discussion for tonight. T has shown you, this station's actually working pretty good, pretty well, apologize for the bad English there, pretty well for us in this location. One of the areas we've identified is to simply move it up the street on city property. If you will notice where the red bowtie, whatever you want to call that is, that's a potential station. The city owns this property. This is the road that I commonly refer to as the Publix Road, not the Publix Road, but the Public Road, you know, where you go to buy groceries. This is the back road that Mr. Bittner and others take on a daily basis to go from Commons, where they live, back to that new development. One day, Anthony and others are going to provide the money, Anthony primarily the brains and others the money, to actually extend Jacksonville Parkway. If you were to relocate Station 4 to your own property, you don't have to buy it. And you could design the station where it could be a double-front lot. Now, what's a double-front lot? It's a lot that goes out on two streets. You could design this station where it goes on to what Ron officially has named Market Place.
Market Place.
Drive. Market Place Drive. And you could also design it so that when the Parkway is built, the trucks could go straight out that way. So for example, envision having a station, and it's designed so that when it needs to go out Marketplace, it simply turns to the right out of the bays. When it needs to go out on the Parkway, it turns left out of the bays. Just a concept. But I think what we can show you is that we do have a site within our own location that would not in any way change in a negative fashion the response times or the travel distance. City-owned property, response time and distance, double access, Parkway potential, potential construction in '24, '25. Here are my recommendations, and we're not asking you to act on these tonight, because remember, this is a pre-budget discussion. Negotiate the sale of the property with the county. Personally, it's nice that they've offered $1 million. I don't think $1 million is where we should wind up. Secondly, I think we should move Station 4 to the city land on Market Place. Put in your next year's budget, the design work, and then work on a bond so that you get into construction in '24 and '25. We've covered a lot on this this evening. We're not asking you to make any decisions. We do need for you to begin to give us direction. If you feel comfortable tonight telling us, folks, great ideas, we're not interested in all of that, fine. We have a day job that will help us know that we don't spend any more time on this. If on the other hand, you feel that we should continue to pursue this opportunity with the county and continue to bring you more financial information, we'll be very happy to do that. Again, I would like to commend T. I think you can see that is one of our young leaders, phenomenal presenter, building around his department, and I'm very proud of him. Open it up now to questions for T or me or Gail or anyone else.
I just want to make a comment. First off, the $1 million, where did that come from? I mean, is that just convenience, or is that anything close to the actual value?
You've talked to the county attorney. That's why I say negotiate a higher price.
They've not indicated how they came to that figure, except Mr. De Sims, of course, emphasized that they do have a 74, 75-year lease remaining, which does tie it up. Now, and that, of course, the building is 20 years old, and it cost about $1 million about 20 years ago to build it, because as I indicated to you the last time I gave you the history on it, is the information that was given. But again, that's the information that's given. There's been no appraisal done on it or anything of that nature to my knowledge. And I'll say one other thing. If you recall the history, the lease was given to the county to build the EOC. Before the county ever finished the EOC, and I have all that history upstairs and shared with you last time, the county then gave the city permission to build the with you last time, the county then gave the city permission to build a fire station on the property that had been leased to the county. So again, the lease has been in existence before the fire station ever went there. And the indications, as Dr. Wood was indicated to, there's no indication that on the property that T pointed out, that additional building could be given there. Their plan, as I understand, is to build toward the back.
For the EOC, but not for the ambulances.
Right. But again, away from Commons Drive there. But again, that's just part of the history that I gave you last time, if you recall.
How is their timetable for constructing the, adding to the EOC compare with construction time of a new, of our new fire station proposed?
The architect has already been hired to begin to work on site plans and some spatial models. It's my understanding that they hope to be able to award a bid for this sometime in calendar year '22, most likely towards the end of '22. You'll remember from your work as council members when we were doing the Center for Public Safety. Architectural work takes many, many months, a lot of concept plans. That's why they would like to have an answer as soon as possible, and they would like to have us out of that facility in two to three years.
Okay.
Now, again, this is not something I think you rush. We need to bring you more financial information. What I can tell you is this. One penny, and Gail doesn't let me do math in public, but I'm going to try anyway, you can borrow $4 million generally at today's interest rates for one cent of tax. I'm not suggesting a tax increase. What I'm saying is, it would take one cent of tax to generate the annual debt payment on a $4 million facility. Now, if you put that over, it's over 20 years. Also, remember this, the Center for Public Safety, amazingly enough, is already, what did it say, chief, six years old, seven years old? You're quite a ways through that debt already. But in my opinion, you only have two options for funding a brand-new station. One is to touch your fund balance. Two is to have debt and to repay that debt as part of your four-cent initiative.
So you're asking us at big read, let you could continue looking at the financial arrangement on that?
Really just asking you to tell us, are you interested in us pursuing this, or do you want us just to go back to the county and say, no, at this time, we're leaving Station 4 exactly as it is, in the location it is? No obligations on your part.
Pursue, but don't commit. That's how I would look at it, until we come back with us.
I think part of it is what Mr. Thomas talked about, and that is, okay, you've given us an offer. Now, let's determine, if you, as a council, are interested in lease-learning more and authorizing John and me to go back and negotiate and see how much more we can get, it's just like what Anthony did. You authorized him to go talk to First Transit, he came back with bad news. Well, guess what? John and I are going to come back with good news. Sorry about that, Anthony.
If this will be of any help to you, we, you know, we could invest in an appraisal, I think, would that help in your negotiations at all?
Absolutely.
Depends on how the appraisal comes back, you know?
That's correct, but I'm thinking it's going to come back more than a million. That's what I'm thinking.
But you're not going to have a lot of buyers for that, so I mean, it's kind of.
The 75-year lease is on the property. And how an appraiser. And in fact, Richard, when we were talking about some other recreational land, we went to the appraiser and talked about lease valuation, et cetera, et cetera. And this was our MAI appraiser, and there was not much track record there on leased property. Now, I can just tell you that. Now, what, again, we'll be glad to pursue that, but again, I don't know, you know, what will come back or not. But we did, on that other piece of land, engage them in conversation about it, because that was a situation, they wanted to lease something to the city, and that, anyway, was a situation, they came back and said they really didn't have a, could give us a number as far as the value there.
But I will say this, I think the county is working in good faith. I think that there's, that we have the best relationship between the city and the county that we've had in a long time. Let us work to see if we can get that number up, and then we can give you more information.
Well, you've established a pretty good case for relocating it, in my opinion. But, you know, that's something we can talk about later on. Another time.
And I know that it really matters, but I'm curious about the details of the original lease.
I am too.
I mean, what was the, you know?
We can supply that to you, the original lease, we can supply to you the agreement after that, that allowed for the construction of the fire station 4. I have several documents upstairs, and I'll be glad to scan in and send to the council.
I'm just thinking, you said the location is pretty good, and I know we're a little concerned about congestion, but, you know, for a million, a million and a half, we can stay right where we're at and renovate and add on and completely redesign that interior to where it would be very much more useful for T and his people. The only issue that we couldn't address by the renovation would be the increased congestion on site.
A lot to think about. I think what I'm hearing from y'all is, you're authorizing us to at least continue to explore this and to see if we can get a better price from the county? Is that what I'm hearing from y'all?
Sound good, y'all? Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Timing on this, we were focusing on Station 3. You know, we knew that was really in more need of an upgrade and change than Station 4, and from what I was understood, so.
And you're correct, Station 3, it has its needs also. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the reports for this evening, and I'll start with Mr. Warden.
No report. Proud to be here, sir.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Thomas?
I do have a report, and unfortunately, they say that what change is the only constant that we can count on, and that doesn't mean that we have to like it. You know, I was so disappointed last week when I heard that the Arc Drive-In was closing.
I know.
I mean, that, you know, what am I going to do with that knowledge of 3, 4, 6, 8,000 that I've had since about 1981? And the delicious food that's come out of that place at such a reasonable price over these 60-some years? I appreciate what Kathy Beinam and the staff have done over these years, and they're going to be missed. I'm going to miss them, but anyway, that's.
It's an institution in Jacksonville, that's for sure.
Did anybody see the report, the TV report about the couple that drove from Pennsylvania when they heard the Arc was closing to come get one last dinner, but?
I saw the cars were lined up. I mean, the parking lot was packed. I thought they were at the marina, but no, there was a line of people waiting there at the window at the Arc.
And it was just a shame, because it was not, it was not for lack of demand. That was the worst part. Anyway, I just want to put it out there.
Thank you for that tidbit there. Dr. Washington? Mr. Sosa?
Took a class called Racial Equity in Leadership. And what that class taught me was not what other people think about me, but sometimes what I think about other people and those things we have inside of us. But that's why that class brought out of me. And some of the problems I have, and a lot of times, it's not, because we could have this division of race and sometimes gender, but sometimes you got somebody that might look at me and say, your ears stick a little farther out from your head, and the less hair I have, the more those ears are going to stick out. I can't do anything about it. That's what my dad gave me. With that being said, words count. And everything you say, and everything you do, and with the things you present. Sometimes cultural competency will make you make, a little lack of it will make you make the wrong decisions in the words you say. So I just hope we're careful as we go forward in all the things that we do, and consider all of those things, because ultimately, what I want to do is make a better Jacksonville. That's what I want to do. This is home for me. And I was thinking about, a lot of times, I found the Marine Corps, they don't get rid of no trash, they recycle it. Some of the worst Marines have been the best Marines. Learned that from my dad. So I hope, as we go forward, in all that we do, we recognize not what we know, but what we don't know. And we have no problem with people criticizing us for what we don't know. And then we take a look inside of us and figure out what we need to do to change it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
On Wassa business, the executive director of On Wassa, Mr. Jeff Hudson, has announced that he will be retiring March 2022. And as chairman of the On Wassa Authority, I've encouraged him to make sure that in his final months, he can develop a working, not develop a working relationship, they have a working relationship now with the city manager, Jeff, to resolve some planning issues concerning water and sewer expansions. So I think you'll hear something on that in the near future in terms of progress to be made. Good. Good to hear. That all? That's it, I'm sorry. Okay. The only thing I have tonight is this Saturday, the Chambers Holiday Parade, it'll be on Western Boulevard, starts at 9:45, but I would, if you were going to go, I'd make sure I got there early before they cut the street off and you can't get in there, so. 9:45, Saturday, the 20th. I forgot, no, he didn't have a report. Did you? Already got Mr. Sosa, he had no report. No report. You still don't have a report, do you? She thought you had.
That'll change.
All right, so Dr. Wood, turn to you.
Mr. Bittner mentioned the fact that Jeff is leaving On Wassa. I can tell you that in the roughly four or five years he's been the manager, he's done an outstanding job of building a great relationship with the city. At Mr. Bittner's suggestion, we do have a meeting scheduled for 10 o'clock this coming Thursday to talk with Jeff and some of his staff, along with many of our staff members, about the possibility of taking some of our service areas and possibly redesigning them. For many years, as you know, the Country Club area has been annexed into the city, but they are technically on On Wassa water. We also know that those water lines, while they have served well, do not actually meet certain fire standards. So that's one of about eight areas that Wally and others have identified that we'll be discussing this coming Thursday. We will certainly keep you informed. The other thing I would like to mention, I know several of you responded, but Terrence is with us tonight, and Terrence has been promoted through an external and internal selection process. He has now been selected to be our Director of Information Technology, our IT Director. So, Terrence, congratulations on that. Then the other thing we would like to do, and while I have the floor as a moment, is the One City moment, if they would bring that up. From the Vault. Last week, Pam and Carmen discovered an amazing thing. And that was that in 1986, Bob Hope, the Bob Hope, actually made a donation to the Beirut Memorial. Here is the check, $1,000, in his handwriting. If you'll notice, it says Bank of America, and it actually has the address, the Hollywood Main Office in Hollywood, California. This was not a donation from the Hope Foundation. This was a donation from Bob Hope. Also, Lisa Miller did some research, and here is a picture of Bob Hope, Miss America, 1983, and others. Remember, 1983 is when the bombing occurred. That Christmas, Bob Hope and his folks were onboard a naval hospital that was taking care of the wounded from that bombing. It's amazing how small the world can be, especially if you have a big heart. They came in peace. Mr. Carter?
No report, sir.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor, 65, I say aye. All opposed?